Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and I'm joined today by Colin and Julie from the Get Oiling team. What's up, guys?
Hello.
Hi, excited to have you here today and excited for everyone who's joining. Please let us know where you're coming in from in the chat. Today we are talking about automation. And today I would really like to hear from you guys as we're getting into this. Because what we're talking about today really kind of opens an infinite number of possibilities for how you can really customize your own business, how it flows, where you insert leverage, and your customer experience or your client experience, your new lead experience. You really have a lot of amazing potential here with this feature that we're going to dive into today to really make your system work for your unique business. And that's kind of the interesting thing about our platform, right? You can buy a lot of cookie cutter solutions out there in the young living world. And you kind of have to run things the way their thing is set up. And that's kind of all you can do. With Get Oiling, you can run your business your way, right? And that means that you don't just have to use Get Oiling for your young living business, right? If you're a coach, if you want to create courses, like there's so much you can unlock with using us, especially if you're at basic and higher in your plan level, so much you can do. So we're going to get into a little bit of what that means today. But before that, don't be shy, head over to the chat. Where are you? We're excited to have you today. So what I'm going to do here in just a sec is get into some slides. We'll turn off our video and then I really would love for you, as we're going through our content today and learning about this feature, to add any questions that come to mind for you into the Q and A so that we can get into those. Because I think that one of the main things that you need to know before you start getting into using automations in Get Oiling is that it needs to connect to something you already do or a thing that already functions in your business. And so if you can think of something where you would want to say, for instance, you know what, I'd really like for somebody to be able to just click something and now they get this and I'm reminded to do that, right? At a specific stage in your business pipeline, then we can actually walk through and show you how to do that, maybe even in your own account, if you'd like for today. So again, really excited to have you here today. I hope you're having a gorgeous day where you are. I feel like we skipped fall in New York City. It's like we went straight from like 85 degree days to 60 degree days. And today there's a 72 degree one and we're taking a really long walk after we're done with our calls today. So I hope it's beautiful wherever you are. And all right, we're going to get out of video, get into these slides and let's get into learning about automations in Get Oiling. So automations really provide you, and actually hold on real quick before I get into this. I want to be able to see our chat and Q and A. And I kind of have to set that up here before I open to full screen. All right, perfect. Okay, so talking about using automation to streamline your young living business. And this is really something that really, it just kind of blows open, like I mentioned, the possibilities that are there for you to take advantage of, to save more time, grow your business more effectively, provide people with the experience you want them to have. And we're going to get into this today, all right? And don't worry, if you're not fully utilizing it, Amanda, I see your comment there. I know I'm not fully utilizing it. The fact is, like, I'm not fully utilizing it either, right? There's always a new thing to learn and to find an opportunity to plug into. So if you feel at any point, anyone who's here today, if you're watching this as a replay, maybe this feels overwhelming to you or you're like, oh my gosh, I haven't even scratched the surface, don't let that bring you to a point of feeling anxiety or stress. Just be excited that you already have invested in a solution that can grow with you, right? Keep that mindset here. We're going to learn something new and it's going to be cool. All right, so today we're going to talk about automations, what they are, when to use them, best practices for them, and then how to create them in Get Oiling. And then, of course, I really hope you guys give us lots of questions that we can go through and talk about today in terms of things you'd like to see automated in your business. So you can see how you could set this up for yourself, right? Because again, we don't really do cookie cutter, but we can show you exactly how to do what you need to do to get what you want from your business and your system. All right, so if you have those questions, like I mentioned, please add them to the Q and A. Our chat can get really lively. And if you need help, if it's even about something else that's not this automations topic today, please go ahead and add that to the Q and A. This is a live call that's intended to serve you on your young living journey and to help you work smarter, right? That's the whole job we have here as a community, as a company. We're here to help you grow smarter in your young living business and any oily adjacent business that you might want to run online with our system. If you want to join one of these calls in the future, or if you know someone who might benefit from these calls, they are free to all of Team YL. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you'd like to work together in dedicated space on a call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview and we can spend some time together walking through something that you've created, maybe helping you get started, helping you figure out how to automate one thing or another in your system, whatever it might be, we can work together. Go to getoiling.com/webstatereview to set yourself up for one of those slots. All right, so question for you guys, let me know in the chat. What functions of your business would you like to automate? So if you were to just ask yourself, you know, if I could make one thing happen on autopilot or maybe a few things just happen on autopilot in my business, what would it be? Really interested to see what you guys would like to have automated. Oh, Amanda says follow-ups. Yes, that's actually, that is something that we can do, right? We can use campaigns to follow up, right? And we can use automations to apply campaigns to contacts at specific triggers and intervals. We could talk about that. Anybody else got one? I really love the idea of being able to add a to-do list for someone based on an action that they've taken, right? So maybe if somebody is just a lead on my general list, right? They signed up, you know, to get a freebie at a vendor event. But every week I send a new blog post article and I actually want to engage with that person when they engage with me. So maybe the link that I use for them to click and go check out the free thing I'm giving away also triggers an automation for me to follow up and see if that person opted in. How about that, right? That way I can follow up with and connect with people who are active in engaging with what I'm doing. Dirk would like to automate prospect to customer or partner conversions. Oh, I love that, yes. Fully functional funnel with follow-up, website funnel and campaign. Fantastic, all right, so we're going to talk about some of this today. So automations, let's talk about what they are. What automations are in your Good Oiling system? They're a thing that can be set up to trigger one or more specific actions on a contact, right? We'll talk about what those are here in just a bit. These automations can be initiated by a contact activity, by you manually applying an automation, or the system might apply it based on some kind of criteria that you've put into place. So what automations allow you to do is to customize your user experience with your list, your member area, and your website, right? So people can have an individualized experience. We can move somebody instead of treating everyone who ever opted in for a free thing from a vendor event the same. We can actually move people who are engaging toward a funnel, perhaps maybe a series of emails and a campaign that pushes more of a call to action to take a next step with you because they're engaging, right? Or if somebody clicks something on a page that you've sent them via email, you know they're interested in that thing and perhaps you can follow up with a new message. So we can customize the user experience. And also, and this is a cool thing, because automations can apply follow-up plans, which is just your way of having a to-do list for your contacts. This can help you stay better organized, right? So if you want, obviously, follow-up can be done via a campaign. But because we're a human-to-human business, we can't just rely on our system to do every piece of the heavy lifting. We can help it streamline or it can help us streamline. But we still want to be able to actually learn about the people that are interacting with us and of course, move our way toward one-on-one conversations with them. So you can be reminded, for instance, to actually follow up with somebody that's registered, you know, at a vendor event, for instance, right? All right, automations can also add or remove, and this is kind of the triggers, right? These are the things that automations can do for you, right? They can add or remove tags, campaigns, follow-up plans, vault access, RSVPs for events, other automations, meaning like we can get into an infinite loop here and automation can add or remove another automation. It can also opt people in or out of email or text. It can also change your contact rating, right? But which is pretty, pretty cool. All right, so let's talk about when we can use automations. So when to use them is first, anytime you need to have more than one action take place on a contact. So as an example, if you have a landing page where you are offering some kind of a free thing, so this is a funnel, and you want to make sure that you've got a human touch in the process. Perhaps because, you know, you aren't getting 500 leads a day, you know, you've got a few coming in here and there, you want to take the time to actually learn about the people that are opting in for your stuff. So maybe you want to give yourself a follow-up plan or a to-do list for new funnel leads that gives you a reminder to look up this person's, use this person's email address to look up their social media accounts, right? So did you know you could do that? You can take their email address and plug it into the search bar on Facebook, on, I don't know if this works on Instagram, it definitely works for LinkedIn, there are ways to do this. So look this person up, search them, see if you know them or if you have mutual friends so that you can go and initiate a one-on-one conversation, right? We're enlisting sort of robots to do work on our behalf, but they aren't doing all of our work for us, right? That's one example. So we could have, in this case, a new lead campaign when somebody says, I want your free thing. And then you've got a follow-up plan. And perhaps if this is for an event that they've signed up for, maybe you're doing a live make and take on Zoom or something like that, then of course you could RSVP them for an upcoming live call that you have. Another time to use automations are when you want a contact to opt in for something without filling out a form. If you want to make it really easy and get somebody the information they want by sending them an email, they can simply click a link in that email and now automatically start getting that thing that they want. So a great use case for this would be like a permission marketing email from your Young Living Virtual Office file. I do have some training on this, cannot recommend enough. You guys go into your account settings when you're logged into Get Oiling and go into the email marketing masterclass. I go into this in great detail and we do have a permission marketing system that we've shared on our YouTube channel as well. But what this looks like basically is you're uploading your VO file, some of which, some people in your VO file, you have permission, explicit permission to contact because those are personally enrolled, maybe they're people you have a personal relationship with. But there are others, if you have a larger team, who don't know you from Adam. And so we want to be able to politely say, hey, if you would like the stuff that I have, click here and now they're tagged and they can get the campaign and they're added to your vault or whatever, right? Or they can ignore it and you don't keep sending them stuff, right? So that you can now, you know, give people only what they want. Another example for, you know, an automation from a click would be, let's just say, for instance, you send out a monthly, you know, first of the month email. You're sharing all the great information, here's our gift with purchase. And maybe you've got a campaign, an educational campaign about a particular product that you want to offer from that email. And you can say, hey, I've got a five-part class that'll send to you via email. If you'd like it, click here. And if you're using an automation to apply a campaign, now only the people who say, yes, I want that, and they click, they automatically get that set of emails. And you're not just sending them all out to everyone, right? Because if you just send them all out to everyone, you're going to have people unsubscribing. You're going to have people marking as spam and that's not good for your email reputation, right? All right, so another great way to use automations is when someone moves from one stage of your pipeline to another. This was mentioned in the chat here, when someone moves from being a lead to being a customer. There are a few things that happen when somebody goes from being a young living lead to when they become a customer. You might want to apply a new, a certain follow-up plan, care call reminders, perhaps. You might want to also include in your checkoff list, adding them to different groups or to vaults, maybe sending them a campaign that, you know, welcomes them and tells them more about what's headed their way, that kind of thing. And it might also, and this is how you would put this all into an automation, you would take, you would remove their lead tag because they're no longer a lead and then apply whatever your young living tag might be, young living customer or whatever that might be, right? Which is a pretty, pretty cool thing. You can do that all at once with one automation, apply all of that in a single stroke. And now you don't have to worry about remembering who's who or what's what. Your system has assisted you in doing that automatically. So, and also here's another example. You could apply a new tag, like for a lead or a scan lead in this case, plus a follow-up campaign and a follow-up plan, so reminders for you after you have had a scan, right, with somebody, maybe you're doing wellness scans. All right, so automations can be triggered from almost anywhere in your Good Oiling system. I'm not exaggerating, almost anywhere, there's like a little lightning bolt icon. If you see it, that's a place for you to add an automation, whether it's when you send something, when something is sent automatically, if you want to add it as a link, so many different options, if somebody filled something out on a page, all of that. So let's talk about where these are applied. So when you send broadcasts, when campaigns send, or even for individual messages in a campaign, when they send, right? Just literal send of a message or application of a campaign can trigger an automation. When someone clicks a link from an email, a text, a page, or a vault, automations can be applied when, this is when if someone who is on your list or a visitor to your website and so on, when they click a link, an automation can be applied. Automations can also apply after campaigns are done sending. So an example here might be if you have a new lead nurture sequence that you have attached to a freebie, like a funnel that you have on your site and you want to move them to a long-term nurture sequence or have them tagged to get your blog post updates or your weekly emails or whatever. If you're doing this for leads, you can actually have that designation shift from, you know, they're tagged this to they're tagged that and they're now going to be receiving this new information after a campaign is sent. When someone RSVPs for an event, an automation can apply. If they opt in on a landing page or a form on a custom page, again, any number of different automations can be applied here. After someone completes a lesson or an entire online class, also, pretty cool, when someone comments on your blog post. And then, of course, when someone is added to a vault, whether that's a free one or they've purchased access to a vault, automations can be applied there as well. So let's talk about best practices for automation before we get into actually showing and telling how we can actually set these up. So first, start with something simple. And start with something logical that fills an actual need or function in your business right now, right? There are a million ways we could go with this. The best option is to look for the one that makes sense right now, right? So if you're just getting started, then I think that the best automation that you could apply is a follow-up plan, right? Use an automation to apply a follow-up plan to your new leads or to folks who opt in for a free thing at a vendor event or an in-person event or online event or whatever. Have an automation that applies, that applies a new lead follow-up plan. And basically what that looks like, and we've got tons of training on this on our YouTube channel, what that looks like is you create a follow-up plan that says, I need to do one, two, three, four, five things, right? Look them up on social media, you know, see if we have mutual friends, like and comment on something, send them a quick hello. If we met in person, send a personalized message, check back in two days, make sure they're getting the emails, whatever that might be, right? So create a follow-up plan and then make an automation that applied it. And then make that automation go out, attach to a contact or trigger this action anytime someone opts in on one of your landing pages or RSVPs for an event, right? Now, this is important, if you're using automations to send new campaigns, right? So if they're clicking on something or they're opting in on a page and we're sending a campaign in sort of a custom way based on what the information they gave us, just be mindful of how many messages might be going out at once to a single contact. So I can think of, actually, one of my clients, for instance, she wanted to find out, so she's doing a vendor event, and for all of the people who are registering at her vendor event, she wanted to know, are they interested in hormones? Are they interested in pets? Are they interested in kids? Are they interested in green cleaning? And there might have been a couple other options, right? And so what we did was on her page for that vendor event, she got a tag. So there's a tag for hormones, there's a tag for, you know, animals, there's a tag for green cleaning and so on. But she also wanted to be able to send a campaign to them that offered that thing, right? So if some, if you're using, you know, that kind of a setup, you're going to want to have like a single choice option, right? Otherwise, we're going to be sending out six campaigns at once if somebody's interested in all the things. And that's just way too many emails to be sending someone at once. They're going to freak out and unsubscribe from you and you've blocked that lead, right? So just be mindful of how many emails they might be getting from you when this is being applied. And also important, if the contact needs to click a link for the automation to work, always give context, let them know, when you click this link, this will happen. Hey, if you want this, click this link and then this is going to happen, right? And that we want, what we want to do, and I'll show you this in a moment, when we set up the automation, we want to make sure that when they click, it's going to send them to a relevant page, like a confirmation page after they've clicked, right? Because we're telling them they're on a page, they're in an email, whatever that is. And we say, hey, if you like this, all you've got to do is click right here and you're going to get access, right? And so when they click it, we need to send them to something that says, hey, you did it right. Check your email because we're sending a campaign that has that information. Or just send them straight to the place where we told them they could go or what they could access, right? Or, you know, it's either or, confirmation page or send them to where they need to go. And basically what we're doing here is we're setting the right expectations. And then once they click, we're actually showing them that they followed the directions correctly. See, by default, if you use an automation that triggers on a click, then it's going to send someone just to the homepage of your website, which could be confusing for someone, right? So do make sure that you're setting those expectations. If the automation is on a page, make sure that the page is either in a vault or linked from an email that's sent to them via a campaign or broadcast. The reason why is that your system needs to recognize the visitor for automations to work. So let's just say, for instance, that you want to send out a Ningxia campaign that you get from Grow Workspace and you want to be able to send it out to somebody who just read some stuff about Ningxia that you put on a page on your website, right? Or a blog post. Now, the only way that something like this is going to work is if somebody was just logged into your member area or they've clicked a link from your email, right? So one of the only places that I will tell you right now, please do not put an automation, is on a blog post. Because anybody in the world can see your blog posts unless you've created, created it to be hidden, which there's not a lot of really relevant use cases for that, right? So unless you've sent the link to them via email, they're not going to get the result, you're not going to get the result, right? That you're looking for with the automation. Or if it's, if it's inside of a vault, right? Because they have to be logged in, the system knows it's them, there are contact in your system. That's the only way automations work. It's on contacts that are already in your system, okay? And they need to have opted into your system or have been added like you would when you upload your VO file. The blog posts and any public places on your site where anyone can find you, these are not a place to put them. And of course, remember, you can also apply automations manually. So let's just say, for instance, your pipeline of how you get most people started with Young Living is that maybe people come to a class or they, they get a scan or they have a one-on-one call with you. Now, when they have, when they go to a class, they are now a lead, right? And we're wanting to move them into the next phase where we get on a call with them. If your point of conversion where someone goes from being a lead to being a customer is a one-on-one interaction, a call, then it actually makes a lot of sense for you to just manually apply an automation to that contact that ticks off all the boxes, right? Tags them, puts the campaign on them, adds them to the vault and so on, all right? And of course, you can use automations to trigger other automations. You can get really complicated with this, which again, I don't recommend that you try to do until you've really gotten comfortable with some more basic functions of using this feature. So we're going to get into the system now and learn how to create automations. And then, of course, we'll get into some live help and Q and A. So what I would love to hear from you guys is what specifically would you like to learn about in terms of automations and how you can use them to set yourself up for more leverage in your system? So go ahead and put that into the Q and A or if you have any questions, go ahead and get into those. So our automations, we're going to go to contact settings to find it. We can also just type in automations right here and find that from our search bar. So you can see I already have a list of the ones that we've created. But we can go and create another and I'll just show you what this looks like. Your automation name is going to reflect in the keyword that's created here. So this is going to be, I'll give you that original, I think, best first example. So follow-up with new lead, right? And that's now going to be called follow-up with new lead. And this action, we're going to apply a follow-up plan. And let me see if I have a lead, here we go, new lead, follow-up plan right here. So I already have one. If you don't have a follow-up plan yet, definitely do make yourself one. I'm going to apply that. And this is, this is not going to happen on click, right? This is something that I'm going to attach to events and landing pages. So I don't need to get into these advanced options for where I'm going to send somebody because it's not going to be a click situation, right? This is a reminder for me to follow up with somebody who's a new lead in my system. So I'm going to create that automation. And then I'm going to go over to my landing pages. And let's just say, for instance, I am sharing this one, gardening and oils, right? It's time to start your garden, da-da-da, this is one from Grow Workspace. If I go into the settings here and I scroll down, I could find this automation. And this is follow-up with a new lead. So I'm going to hit done here and save. And when I go to view, and I'll show you what this looks like, I want to sign up for this. Right, so I go, let's go. Perfect, so I'm going to hit continue and now I actually get the guide, which is cool. And again, this is already set up with Grow Workspace. If you have their gardening and oils bundle, you have access to this. But let's go look at what happens in the dashboard. So you can actually see that I have new, I have information, here's a person who opted in a few seconds ago. And I now have a follow-up plan. And I do have some older ones on this contact, to be fair. Let me actually go to the most recent ones here. Here we go. So this follow-up plan has, let's see, look up social profile and add as a friend, like and comment on a social post. So if I go over and I look this person up on social media and I've done that, I'm going to click to save. Maybe I am going to shoot them a message to keep the convo going if we're on social, right? So maybe I check that off after I do it and I go and I add a note from our interaction that we maybe had yesterday at seven-ish, right? So we've talked about kids soccer or something like that, right? Shared a desire for learning green stuff. Just going to put that down for now. So I have that past action. I still have more to do, but now I have this new note for her, which is pretty cool, right? Okay, so that was an example. Now let's go get into some more. Jolene says, so for a contact to receive the automation, you said either in vault or from an email. I like the vault idea, for example, a prospect vault where there's other info and they can go down the rabbit hole. My question is, how does that flow work? Because they need to get an email to set up password for the vault. So do you not recommend? Okay, so the use cases, I'll give you an example. Inside of the Get Oiling member area, if you have been a member of the launch series for the Brand My Business Workshop or Email Marketing Mastery, these are courses. But what we do, and this, another example that I'll give you, it's not something I'm able to show you, but I have a client who has a 28-day challenge where folks can get a text in the morning to remind them to do a thing, perform a step. And that, that text is in a campaign, right? Now, we're not going to assume that every single person who joins the challenge wants to get that text every day. And so what we do is on the page inside of the vault, we send We say, do you want daily email reminders? Click here. And then this links to that automation. Right? So that would be an example of, of something inside of your member area. So if you have. A member area, a vault that's specifically for a, um. For your, your Young Living customers, for instance. And you have a class that is all about Ningxia. And you want to give people the opportunity to get the class via email or text. Then you would take an automation link and you would put it on that lesson page. Right? And now instead of just sending the Ningxia campaign out, because you feel like sending the Ningxia campaign out, people can say. Oh, I want to learn more about this. They can click a link and then that's going to send them. The Ningxia campaign because you created an automation that sends the Ningxia campaign. Now, in that case. I would send them back to the same page you're linking it from, right? So if we go to, back to setting up automations here. Let me see, here we go. Apply Grow Workspace Ningxia Red Campaign. So I actually have this set up already. Now, what we would want to do, of course, you do want to have this add action. And then you want to add the campaign, in this case, the email Grow Workspace Ningxia Red Class. Uh, but then we want to send them to, you know, back to your member area. Right? So this would be James. And then I would actually even put in the vault here, right? So, um, if you're going to be creating automations for these different Grow Workspace, um. Classes, uh, to send out for the different bundles that you have. Um, then in all of them, the visitors should go back to maybe your oily education class URL or something like that. Um, or your vault URL here. So that way they're at least going back to where, something close to where they started. So that's how I recommend using these inside of a page or inside of a, a lesson. In a vault specifically, and that kind of provides them with those opportunities to kind of get into the learning rabbit holes that we want to encourage. Uh, but it allows them to really choose their experience. Okay, Amanda, if someone is booking into an event and it takes them to Stripe for payment. How do I send them an email confirmation and reminder emails leading up to the event? Oh, that's fantastic idea. Yeah. So, um, we actually did an events training recently. Um, you should. Definitely check this out on our YouTube channel because I have a complete checklist for this, including how you set that up. So here, let's, let's look at this real quick. Um, that is YouTube, Get Oiling. And it's the most recent events one. So if I go right here and type events. Here we go. Uh, in-person events for Young Living. That would be this right here. And actually, let me click it because I have a checklist here. Here we go. So the checklist for this is actually going to walk you through setting up your follow-up plan. Uh, and then setting up your campaigns and then applying those, right? So. Um, you don't have to use events. And actually, in this particular case, if you're going to be charging. If you're going to be charging for access to your events, then I actually recommend that you use a page. Right? So use a page like this, uh, and create a page. We'll just pretend that this is the event. Right? And what you're going to do is here, we're going to, uh, set up payments. Of course. We don't have a payment processor connected to this account, but you would be setting up the payment for the event here. That's going to connect, right? Right? And then what you do is after purchase, leads right here. The campaign that you want to send out is going to go here. And the campaign that you create, because this, it sounds like you want reminder emails leading up to that event. Um, the campaign that you're going to create, let me go right over here. And you don't actually have to create automations for this. It's just literally attaching a campaign. So, um, let me go. Pretend like it's this one. So let's just say, for instance, your event is going to be on, uh. October 14th. So I'm going to. Set this, this start date for this campaign to be October 13th. And so this email is going to say, you know, here's a confirmation, here's what's coming up. And then this email, this one, it's day one. And so it's going to send. Well, actually, we would want to set this up the day before that, wouldn't we? So we'd set it up for the 12th because we want to send a reminder. Here's the day before reminder. And so this would be. Day before, and you could actually go into advanced settings and say, you know, day before. Uh, we want to send that at a specific time, maybe 5:00 PM. And then this would be day of, and you would set that for maybe an hour or two before, depending on whether or not that's an in-person thing, right? So what you would do is you would take this campaign that you have set up that's date-based. And then you would go over to that page and you would just attach that. So when somebody purchases. Um, because in that case, if, um, let's just say this page, for instance, uh, required payment. Um, to actually get through, uh, the lead process. So they got to put their name and their email in. And in order for them to do anything on this page, they have to put in, not just their name and their email, they also have to put in their payment information. Then whatever you put right here as the campaign is going to send out to them. Right? So this isn't actually something that requires an additional automation, although, um, if this is for leads, I would add that, um. That lead, uh, follow-up with a new lead automation here, uh, applying that follow-up plan. So you get a reminder. And definitely, definitely do check out our most, most recent trainings on. In-person and vendor events on our YouTube channel, because those have checklists and really kind of walk you through all the steps you need to perform in order. Okay, Jolene, back to your question. So previously you weren't talking about for the lead magnet, having it live in a prospect vault that they're directed to is the automation. So, I mean, you could absolutely, like, you know, let's just say, for instance. Um, if you're offering a freebie on your website. And you also, you know, you, you want people to not just get the free thing, you want to add them to a vault. That's just a matter of changing what's down here under leads. You can add them to a prospect vault. Right? So once they've opted in and they're in your system, you know, what I would recommend in, in a case like this. Right? Um, if, if you are giving away a prospect vault from a page like this. I would have a follow-up plan that I, I have attached here as an automation. That is reminding me to check and see if that person has accessed the vault. Right? So that you can go and maybe send a quick message and say, you know, hey, how are you getting along and noticed you haven't been able to access the resources yet? Do you need help? Right? So that would be an example of an automation that I might want to attach here, but you can actually add them to a vault from right here. On the page, and you can do this from landing pages as well. You can add them to vaults in that way as well, not just on custom pages. Stacy, good question. How do I get into the workshops? So if you go here to your dashboard. Or really from anywhere where you see this left-hand side menu in Get Oiling. Scroll all the way down to my account, settings. And you've got Brand My Business Workshop and Email Marketing Mastery. These are new. And, um, I definitely recommend if you don't have a website set up yet. Uh, a custom website, and that's a priority of yours, start here. Uh, but if you already have that set up or you're really just wanting to, um. Do better with how you're communicating with your VO file and things like that, you could certainly get into this one first. Typically, my recommendation is going to be to do this one, uh, and then this one, but it's up to you. They're not necessarily like one is a prerequisite of the other. And so when you click here, it's actually going to add you to the vault. Uh, which you'll be able to see when you log into getoiling.com forward slash members, then you can see what you have access to. And we have lots and lots of stuff in here. Anyone else? Let me know what kind of questions you have, or maybe more use cases that you might want to see. Um, in terms of putting, uh, automations to use in your business. Let me see, I did just see, um, and I, I missed this in the comments. Um, but let me see, in terms of like inactives, let's talk a little bit about list cleaning. This is a little bit advanced. You will learn more about this in Email Marketing Mastery. Uh, but if you're using a system where maybe you have a campaign. That is your new lead nurture campaign. These are the series of, you know. 25 messages or usually not that long, actually. It's going to be more like seven to 10 messages. That you send out to people who have just said yes to something you offered for free on your website. You don't want to be sending them a ton of stuff, right? While they are going through that initial sequence. But maybe after that sequence is over. We want to add an automation that changes them from new lead nurture sequence to, um. Long-term nurture, right? And so what we would do is apply an automation to this last message. Right? So we would have, um, add to long-term nurture here. And then after this is done sending. We then, uh, maybe send them a new email, or this is when they actually go into, uh, they have a new tag. To where these are the people I'm sending my blog posts and, and lead content out, out to you on a, you know, ongoing basis. Another thing you might consider is using a follow-up campaign and a specific tag. Uh, for your people who are brand new with Young Living, right? So in this case, we would be, um. We would be starting off with, um, you know, maybe drawing out our pipeline where we can say that from. Day zero, right? Which is the day that they sign up for Young Living. Up until, I mean, maybe about 90 days later, our main goal is to get them. Hooked on a product they love, right? We can all agree with that, right? When somebody gets started with Young Living. First 90 days, your number one goal is let's get them and let's have them fall in love with the product, right? And so what are the things that you need to do to get you to that point? You make that into a list and you make that a follow-up plan. And that follow-up plan, you're going to add to an automation along with. First 90 days, Young Living customer. Right? Or something like that. And so now you can apply that automation to someone when you sign them up. When you send their maybe onboarding campaign, their new welcome to Young Living email, the automation can maybe apply then. Or if you have a vault that you add them to, and that's the main, uh, sort of step that you perform. The addition of them to the vault can then tag them and apply that follow-up plan and all of that. But then once they're past that 90 days. Right? Now they're in a new sequence where, um, we are working on, uh, developing our story with our hero product, maybe finding a second hero product. Maybe our next focus at that point is, um, is getting their story, right? Helping them really get a transformational result. And so what are their lists of things that we need to make sure we do, the milestones we need to pass? And so now basically what we're doing is we have an automation that designates and gives us all of the steps. And sends them all of the information that they need on time for phase one, which is that first 90 days. And then after that 90 days is up, right? Your, the next automation can trigger and now you have a new set of things that you need to do and maybe new information that you're sharing with them. Does that make sense? That's kind of the idea here. You do want to, as you're using these automations, really be thinking about your bigger goals. And you should be able, in a linear fashion, even though your business doesn't actually work in a linear way. Um, you can draw out the plan in a linear fashion so that you can be moving things along. As needed for that purpose. So it does help before you even start diving into this stuff for you to kind of outline what that looks like for you. Right? If point A to point B is get hooked on a product. What's your checklist? What information do they need? Uh, what am I going to call the people on this stage? And now you've got everything that you need to create the features and functions that an automation can apply. Then what's the next stage? And then what's the next stage, right? And you can do this, of course, uh, pre-lead as well. I've done previous trainings on this, using follow-up plans to manage your, your business pipeline. For Young Living, so where you've got people that you've just met. You know, your first goal is to really, uh, kind of board them, right? Um, and, and understand them better. Our next is to really. Help them to get to a place where they can open up to us and share a goal. Uh, or a problem that they need help solving. And then our next goal is to. Help them see that you can help them get that done with Young Living products, right? So if we can map this all out, then it becomes really logical and easy to see how we can create these things. And even if you are on basic and you're, you've just got like a little taste of everything that our system has to offer. If you've got clarity first of sort of what those milestones and steps are, then you can really optimize for where you are in your business right now. Right? So if you're on basic and that's where your budget is for basic, then I would really be focusing on the top end of your funnel, right? The very beginning of your business pipeline. That's not the management of your business. That's not, uh, the educational stuff, right? That's the, how do I get more people in here, right? How do I get more customers? So focus more of your efforts and resources in the system on those activities. All right, Jolene had another question. Would like to set up an automation for current members to opt in or click boxes that they would like more info on. Okay, so you have a couple of options for this, depending on what you have in place. If you have a vault, then, you know, if you're using the how to move your groups off of Facebook method, where we basically got all the Grow Workspace. Product information bundles in online classes, you're kind of giving them that option already, right? You just have to make sure that you aren't just relying on their own volition and automation in the system. To make sure that they're well-served. You do still have to be showing up, uh, and, and having sort of a cadence of communication with them. Um, so that expectation of, um. Of communication and, um, accountability is, is set. Um, and understood. But the other option here would be, uh, to create a page. Um, which I can show you. Uh, if we create a page in our system. Uh, let's just pretend that this is it, where we can say, you know, hey, I want to serve you best and. I want to know, you know, what it is that you're most interested in learning about, or whatever that might be for your customers. Uh, then what you're going to do is in the lead form on the page. We're going to ask specific questions. Obviously you need to change what's here, um, but we've got their name, email, phone. And so we'll say, um. What are you most interested in learning about first? And this is going to be pick one, right? So it can be. A dropdown list, pick one, or a list, pick one. This just basically means there's going to be a radio button or a dropdown list. One of these two, right? So I'm going to use a dropdown list. And, uh, this is going to go into past actions. Um, we're going to go to edit list. And so this would be hormones. The next one will be pets. Another could be green cleaning. Another could be, uh, more energy, you know, stuff like that, right? But then you get to take it a step further, right? Open these guys up. And in this case, if you have a campaign that's about hormones, you're going to attach it here. And you're maybe going to add the hormones tag here if you want to. Um, same for pets. If you've got a campaign, apply it here, right? And so on. And for the follow-up plan, if they're going to be the same for anyone who signs up here, just to check and make sure that they're getting the education. Uh, that they signed up for, then you could actually, instead of applying the automation here for the follow-up plan. I would actually do it down here because the same one would apply to everybody. Right? But you do get to choose what, uh, communication they get from you here. Now, the reason why, uh, we're choosing to do a pick one here is because we don't want somebody. To click all and then they get six campaigns sent to them at once, because that's super overwhelming. And, uh, most people aren't really going to intuitively know how to like not get that right now, right? And so here's, here's what I would do. If you want to keep this going, you want to keep providing people with more opportunities to learn. I would create a second page. We'll just use a link page here as an example. I'll create a second page and on each of these, we'll have, these would link to an automation that triggers a new campaign. Maybe this one's Ningxia, maybe this one's thieves, maybe this one's. Uh, yoga and this one's hormones or whatever. And then this page is what you send out. At the last email of the campaign, of every one of those campaigns you offer. So that means that once that person says they fill it out and they say, I am most interested in hormones right now. And what you say on the page is, you know, hey, I have so many resources to share with you. Pick the first thing that you want to start with. Fill out this information and now you're going to get access to whatever it is that you picked. And don't worry, when the class is over, I'm going to give you an opportunity to pick another. And then you're going to send them this page. And because you sent this to them via email, they can click any of these on the page. And it'll work fine. You just can't share this page anywhere else or publicly because it's not going to work, right? Automations don't work for people who aren't contacts or for contacts who haven't, uh, logged into your member area or clicked a link in an email, uh, from you recently. Right? So in this way, and this is similar to the client I was talking about earlier, who wanted to send out customized education from new, like from, uh, the new lead. Uh, that she gets at, uh, vendor events. You know, she can basically follow the same system to where maybe they clicked, like hormones first. Uh, but in the last email of the hormones campaign, it says, hey, I've got a lot more where this came from. Click here to go and pick your next class. And they can click it. And when they go there, they can. Pick the next one. And then of course, the link to this page is at the end of the subsequent campaigns. And so they can actually just do a continual loop of as many of these as you want. That's, that's kind of what that system will look like, Jolene. I hope that helps. All right, Cheryl says, I always get confused when to use a campaign and landing page to nurture prospects pre-lead. I want to nurture them until they have started using and loving the products. For example, when I get. I, I get stuck when they want to hear more about essential oils. So I'll either invite to an online class or sign up for newsletter. Can I send them right to an event page or should I have a landing page before an event page on my website? So you should have both. Uh, so you basically, if it's something that's publicly available or should be publicly available. Uh, then you want to have that listed. So any lead who, let's just say they showed up. Uh, because they saw you in social media or something like that. Um, they'll have the opportunity to stumble upon that event and maybe attend, right? But you can create an automation where you're RSVPing them for that event and you can send that out to people. And you can send that out to people who are already on your list, right? So I'll show you what that looks like here. If we create an automation, let me see if I have an event here that's actually active. Perfect, okay. So I'm going to go create an automation here. And so this will be a link that they can click via email, right? So we'll create this. And this is going to be RSVP for events. And obviously, you'd want to be specific about which event that this is for, because it's not going to be universal. The action here will be event RSVP. Here we go, October Expo RSVP, yes, add action. And then I want to send them to a confirmation page, because they're going to click from email. There we go. So create automation. And then what we're going to do is we're going to copy this right here. Or if you're in the list of automations, you can click get keyword, right? So then what I would do is I would go to that contact, go find them. And then we will send a message and say, hey, you mentioned wanting to learn more about oils. I have a class coming up. And then info about the class. Right? You want to actually put it here. You can register in one click right here, right? And then we're just going to link this text and paste in this automation. And now it's there. Right? So that's what you can do. You can, of course, if you already have the link in your in your events, you can send them the link to the event as well, if you prefer. But anytime you want to just have an action performed or multiple actions ideally performed in a single click from an email like this, then you're going to want to just use an automation for that. Because now this person is RSVP'd, yes, I'm going. And then anything else you have attached to that event, like a campaign, tags, things like that are going to apply to this contact when they RSVP, yes, because they clicked on this automation that does that for them. It would be the same as them going to the event page and RSVPing, yes. I hope that makes sense. Feel free to please ask more questions if it doesn't. And yeah, you guys, this, what I did here, obviously, I showed you in other places where you can attach the automation. So if a customer actually fills out a form somewhere, if they complete a class, if a campaign is completed or a particular message in a campaign sends, or even if you are sending something and you want to run an automation, well, this would be actually how you apply, like add the automation from here. So do you see what I did there? If we go find, we'll just add this guy. And so we can actually add additional automations here if we wanted to, which is a pretty cool shortcut. So yeah, you can add those here in the same way that I showed you. You can add the automation in this email. You can add this to a page in a vault or a lesson inside of an online class. And of course, on a page. But again, just pretty please make sure that if you're adding these to a page, that the page is being sent to them via email and they clicked a link in email to go to that page, right? Or that page is inside of a vault, because the system has to recognize that contact for it to work. Okay, love this. And can also send them to the vault with a class. That's right, yeah. So it would be, it'd be a bit of work, right? Like we talked about this in Email Marketing Mastery. Like I want to make use of all of these amazing campaigns that they get from Grow Workspace. So what do we do? How do we do it? Well, it's going to be a project, right? Because you're going to be going in and making an automation and a redirect for every one of those emails that you get from their bundles. But once they're there, they're there, right? So this is work once you use often. It's something that's going to be leverageable long-term for your business. So it's a great project to have in place. And now you can, you know, really feel good about making full utilization of what you have access to, to educate and support your people. So I hope that that helps. Just pretty please make sure if they're clicking a link, send them to a confirmation page or back to the page that they started. Always tell them what's going to happen, right? What's going to happen when they click, so that they know that they've done something right. And then, and then, of course, you don't have to worry about redirecting to anything if it's something that's just automatically applied by a page when they opt in or something like that. How many automations in premium plan? Good question. I don't have that memorized, but let's go look at the Good Oiling website and find out. So if we go over here and we go to pricing and features, do, do, do. And let me see, you said premium. Let's see more details. Whereas automations, automations, haha. You get 100 at premium. Lots of them. A way to be me too, Amanda, you got it. All right, could you also give feedback for a newsletter signup for a prospect? Or for public, like someone who sees my Instagram post? Cheryl, will you raise your hand for me? I'd like to bring you out just to chat, so we can look at this together. So I want to make sure we've got this right. Hi.
Hello.
All right, so is this something that's on your site that you want to look up?
Uh.
Or is it more like you want to, you want to talk through it and get feedback?
Yes, because I get stuck for, I, my biggest issue is I don't want to open up like to the whole world. I want to talk on Instagram, but I have enough warm leads and prospects. I just want to nurture and get them going and attend to them and invite them into online classes. I don't want to open up. I don't want to spend a lot of time on Instagram answering questions to people that I'm not sure if they're qualified.
Okay. Okay.
And so like a newsletter, I mean, I'd love to just put a newsletter link or something like that on my Instagram and have people sign up and then more information. But I'm not sure how to go about that.
Yeah, okay.
And the two things, so sorry. And then the two things, I kind of want to put people on either, you know, a class online or a Q and A. And then people that like don't want to give their information or they're just not there yet, the newsletter signup.
Okay, okay. So basically, what I would recommend is this. It sounds like you're getting a fair amount of, are you getting a lot of questions from people on Instagram who are just like trying to get free info from you?
I haven't put it out there. I just, from experience, I just get overloaded and then I can't, I just want to do maybe a few people a month and just get them going. So yes, yes, I actually do. I do get a high amount of response on Instagram for anything that I post. So I just want to lead them someplace that's just to create that automation.
Got you, okay.
And then once I'm, and then, sorry, when they once I've got them live, then it's easy to just, you know, like a scan, wellness scan or whatever, or self-care plan or something like that.
Okay, great. So the top of your funnel or pipeline here is going to have multiple doors. One of them should just be, you know, get on my list, get my updates. You know, where you can say, you know, hey, I talk about this stuff all the time via email. So make sure that you're on my list, right? And that's something you could say on your Insta to cover that base. And then you should have an additional one. If you're going to be hosting live classes on a regular basis, you can say, you know, I go into deep dives about XYZ topics this often. If you want to know about what's coming up and always make sure that you can get one of the few seats that are available, click here, right? And so you have basically a landing page with a confirmation campaign. Just a single, hey, you're signed up for this email, right? You can add more lead nurture sequence to that, of course. But, but just a single, hey, you're signed up. It tags them for the one that you're going to filter for when you send out broadcasts. And you use that just to get your general mailing list, right? So people are tagged for that. And then, of course, for people who specifically want to also know about your upcoming live events. And so those two things you can be promoting. I think that maybe it would be effective to have both of them, like in your link tree, for instance. Because, you know, for some folks, like they would just be interested in getting whatever you send. But then there are going to be some who are like, I'm really interested in this thing that's coming up. So when you say, like in your promoting on Insta, you know, hey, you know, did you know that blah, blah, blah thing about hormones? And then you could say, click the link in bio and get updates on this and my other upcoming classes, right? And so now they're on like your class notification list.
Okay, so I have pretty much two. Like on my Instagram, you're saying have a link tree with either a signup for newsletter option or the class.
Yeah, both, yeah.
Okay, have the link tree. And then the tech side of it, if they want to sign up for my newsletter, have a landing page and then just set up, like it's a monthly newsletter, just set that up as a campaign.
Just a confirmation, hey, you're in, right? Because you're going to be like, because that monthly newsletter is going to be a broadcast, most likely, right?
Okay.
Yeah, because you're going to actually go in, you're going to filter for those people. And then you're going to write out whatever it is that you want to send to them months, right? Which is going to be a little bit different. You do this differently. So like if you get a campaign from Grow Workspace, that's your like first of the month education stuff that you send out to your Young Living customers. That they created as a campaign. And this, in all of the cases where you're creating it yourself, you're just going to be filtering for the people who opted in. So whatever the tag is on that landing page. And then you're going to compose a message or start from a saved reply and then use that as like your template for the message you'll compose.
Okay. And then for the, like you said, for the class, like going into a deep dive, they would click on to a landing page that would go to my, just kind of like a segue. And then they click on to my event page and then they can register on my event page.
No, no. So I would, this setup would be exactly the same as for signing up for your email list. It's just going to tag them with, you know, upcoming events list, right? Where you're going to be promoting those events to people who said yes to knowing more about your teaching opportunities, learning opportunities. And then maybe the redirect, instead of going to a confirmation page, send them to your events list. So your website.com/events, so they can actually see what all is there.
Okay, so it's an opt-in. So the landing page is an opt-in to get future. And then, and then it'll send me, send them to the event page. So they can register or they can look at the upcoming events and register for specific. Okay, great.
Exactly, yeah.
Really helpful, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. And then what you can do, again, to those people who said, I want to know about all your classes, Cheryl, then you have, when you create a new event, then create an automation that automatically RSVPs them. And then you can send that out to the people who are already on your events list so that they've got that one-click RSVP from email.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Awesome, great questions, you guys. Great questions. Super proud of you. Excited to see what you do with this. If there are more things you'd like to learn, more use cases you'd like to see iterated, you want to learn how to create new stuff, sell more stuff? Who here would love to have an online class that you can sell? That's something that anybody here is interested in? You show your hands. Is that something you'd like to do? Awesome.